Okay, call the meeting and we'll have to call roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn?
Present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Thanks for the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I need to add a couple of items. One is timber drive easement for sidewalk project that the town is about to undertake, and then also a rezoning, action to look at a vote that was previously, I guess previously adopted a week or two ago at our last meeting. We need to relook at that rezoning. And then also, I want to recommend that we move item three, relocation of Historic Depot, up to item number one, so we can, we have guests that would probably like to go, unless there's some out there that are interested in our standard contract. Probably not, so.
Okay, with those additions. Yeah, I move approval of the agenda with those additions noted.
Second?
Motion made, second is all in favor of the vote, I say aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, we've got several reports and discussion items. First is the standard contract services templates.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna do the depot item first, Mr. Mayor. We spoke about this at the last meeting and had several exhibits. I have several more to show you as we continue the discussion. We plan to have this on the August 5th meeting for more detailed exhibits from a consultant, but we have some visuals that'll suffice for now in our discussion. So what we're talking about here is, we'll list one up here. We're talking about the relocation of the Historic Depot to the lot at Pearl and Main Street. And what we've done here was a lot of conversation on the last exhibit about which elements would be in the base plan or the first phase, whatever that may end up being. So this is a sketch shaded in yellow are the items that would be in your base plan, and then we can add elements to it, whether it's in the first phase or second phase. But basically, you're gonna have the relocation of the depot with the ramps and the foundation with some landscaping to go with it, and then also the caboose with the minimal amount of rails. And it shows rails going, you know, almost the main street of the main street, but that could be cut off at any point. The point is, this railing that's here could be added at a later point or some other configuration to simulate train track for some of the things they want to do on the site. But basically, we're looking at just the relocation of the depot and the caboose without many other elements initially, but that is open for discussion. We've got a row of trees here, shrubbery, not trees, there'll be shrubbery, and that's basically to delineate the parking that GBI is gonna use until such a time that the Historic Society wants to move elements into this area. But for now, it will be used for overflow parking, and we'll concentrate on just this area closest to Pearl Street for now. Any questions about that? Some of the things we're gonna look at to add on, whether it's now or in a future phase, and we don't have cost estimates on those yet, but there was discussion about having a sidewalk to go from, at least some type of walkway from the building to the depot is one walkway, and then there was a discussion about potentially having sidewalk to go from the depot to Main Street. So we'll look at that, and if you notice in red too, while I'm here, there are some trees. I know initially when we pointed, when we went on site and looked at siting the depot, we knew there would be one tree we need to remove, but then after looking at some of these others and some of the future elements that may go there, well, present and future elements, we think it's a prudent idea to go ahead and remove some of these trees here closer to the street. So that's why you see those in red. And I think one of them has a bad top. It looks like it's dying, so we need to take that one down anyway. So.
Those sycamore or tulip trees, whatever they are, big broad leaves, it looks like those are two to go. They don't appear to have any redeeming value. The three cedar trees that are next to the Pearl Street building?
Right here.
Are they planned, they are planned to be left, Ben?
It's, right now, they're planned to be left, but they can be removed if?
Down anytime.
Yeah, they can come down anytime, yeah.
I sent along a note that there's a power pole.
There's a power pole right in this area that has a guide wire in it.
What do you think about that?
I would need to kind of know what the distance is from there, the wire to the caboose, but that's something we would have to engage the power company to see what the options are. I don't know if moving that guide wire is an option, or if they would have to do something with their entire pole.
One thing they might consider doing at least as a minimum, and this is real any question for them, is to put some type of sleeve on it, so that if somebody runs into it, they hit a broad thing instead of?
Right.
Or it would hurt them.
Okay.
The, back to the cedar trees, there's a pole in there that has some markings on it, that somebody owns it. Just got wires dangling down through the trees, wrapped around the tree, around the pole, and comes over to the Pearl Street building. I think Kay or Judy may even have a picture of it, but I don't, I don't think it serves any useful purpose if we could eliminate.
If that's the photo that you sent me earlier this week, that may be the spectrum or some type of cable service that was hanging on the building. There was a gray box there. So, yeah. I know we previously had service there for some internet, and we may need to either reconnect that or add another connection, so we'll look into that.
I didn't see any power coming to the pole, though.
Okay, all right. And some of those elements out there could be leftovers from when there were other buildings around too.
Rodney, we may have asked this last time, but I don't recall the answer if we did. And I don't see a scale on here. Could you tell me the approximate distance from the depot building back to, I guess, the caboose depicted there? I just want to get a frame of reference for what that distance is, if you know.
Sixty to eighty feet?
I guess.
I don't have a scalable diagram.
Okay, all right.
There are some dimensions on here, but I am not able to read them.
It possibly looks farther here than, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's probably less than a hundred feet?
Yes.
Or about a, yeah, okay.
Likely, yes. And as we mentioned before, the depot will be an attraction. It will not be set up for entry by patrons to go in. There's some other work that's gotta be done to it, and then they would also need a ramp and those type of things, ADA accessible ramp, but for now, it'll be an attraction to the site. All right, so that's one thing. As you can see here, the Pearl Street building here, and it shows existing parking. That's the parking that we're planning to use. And also, the town is going to allow the Historical Society to use the Pearl Street building for storage of items, and also to have kind of a, somewhat of an office area or greeting area, and use of the restrooms and the parking. And so this will be Exhibit A to be added to the contract. And this hatched area here is area designated for use by the Garner Area Historical Society. There's some offices there, and some, there's some furniture leftover from a previous user, and they'll have access to that. There's a separate entry to that area, and then also, we've agreed that they will be allowed to have a desk in the front lobby area, just to do any, whatever kind of business they wanted, they asked for that. So we designated this area, and then the rest would be considered common area, this other hatched area. So, you know, the town will be coming through here, because we have storage and items in here, and then also the restrooms might be available for various reasons to others. And then this parking would be common parking. And then the white unhatched area would be for town use.
Things that you might include as, and I don't know the details of it, but as a, one of your contingency items is checking on the AC in that area. In there, I heard it in one place, but I didn't necessarily hear it in, I heard it come on in one place, but I'm not, it's just a matter of checking on it.
Okay. And I know part of the building, at least, is condition, is maybe a matter of just running more duck or whatever, so we'll check on that. So, any questions about that? Did y'all have any questions? Okay. Saw you talking over there, so I'm just making sure. All right, any questions about, about that use?
Good, I'm glad you got that spelled out, delineated.
And let's see what I have next here. That's the original. Any questions about this before I go to the actual contract portion of the conversation? All right. Well, before I go to the contract, I want, I'm gonna go to this cost estimate here. And I don't, can you see that? Let's see. Let me make it a little larger. But basically, these are some of the costs that I brought forth last time, and I'm just calling this the base estimate. And you can see it's a little bit higher than it was last time. Because of the site plan and some of the elements and things that have to be done, I added another $25,000 related to site, and that will help cover the cost of tree removal. If, you know, once we, if we put a walkway into the caboose, it may even, you know, if the walkway further continues the main street, and then if possibly something has to be done to the, that power pole that the town has to contribute to, so just increase that. And then the expanded scope next to it is the same items as in the base scope, but then we add curb and gutter, and we don't have any estimates for any of these right now. Hopefully, we'll have those before our next meeting. But you have curb and gutter, a concrete sidewalk to Main Street, and then paved parking on Pearl Street, the other three elements that the council asks us to look at. So that is, it is gonna increase the price a pretty good amount, but we'll get those numbers to you. But for now, our base estimate is $3.25, and then we'll look at what those other elements bring. Any questions about any of those?
Well, those additional costs, do you think they'll, there's, they'll, did anybody will even have time to get those kind of costs set up before we take action on the base budget?
We're gonna have estimates, I believe, that we're working on, so we should have at least some estimates on, because based on probably some work we've recently done, we kind of know how much sidewalk cost per linear foot and those type of things, so it'll be, it'll be something to go by, help you make a decision. Okay, the last thing I have is... I don't know if you can see there or not, let's see. All right, well, I highlighted some things in red. Are y'all able to see that? And basically, the first blank will be the date that is signed, or the effective date of the agreement. So that's, that's gonna remain blank until we sign it. The biggest thing right now is Section 1.2. The contract is gonna commence on a certain date and expires in 10 years and is renewable for successive five-year periods on mutual consent. I just want to get any feedback on that initial term.
Would that initial, the commencing date, would that be the date that we adopt all of this, assuming we don't prejudice the rezoning, of course, and take, have any ex parte communications? But will it, will it, again, on the date we agree on the budget and all of that, or the date that they take occupancy?
The date they take occupancy. I'm looking at this just for further explanation. This contract, first, the town is gonna make them move the depot, make the improvements, and do all the things to the site and the building, kind of as a construction project. This agreement is more like a lease agreement, basically, like a lease agreement. So this will not go into effect until they're ready to take occupancy. So this is more of a lease and operations agreement. So that would be the date that this commences, and that's when the 10 years start, basically, when they, when they move in, take occupancy.
Good. What is the projected date that they would take occupancy? I know you can't tell us exactly, but what do you hope for, or what do you expect?
Our, our goal is to have the depot moved by the end of the year and have it completed by the spring of 2020.
And that's when they would take occupancy in 2020?
And that's when they would take occupancy.
Okay. Are we gonna run into any things like you do with pay asphalt in the wintertime? Somebody comes and says, oh, we can't move the depot because it's November. Are we gonna have to put up with that?
Likely not, because it's our project and we pretty much control whether we'll allow, you know, they still gotta use good construction practices. If it's too cold to pour concrete, then we're not gonna allow them to, but, but we don't, we won't have the same restrictions we might normally see from other agencies at that time of year. We'll be able to control that a bit better. Any comments about the term, or is everybody satisfied with that being the terms of the agreement? And then this section here, sorry that I got two pages back to back, but rather than trying to fix it, I think we'll be all right. Just to clear, to make it clear from the onset, added a phrase, "Future phases involving capital, operating, and maintenance costs will be determined by future councils as a need arises and upon mutual agreement of both parties." So that way, we know there's likely gonna be future phases, but it doesn't bind this council. There's gonna be other councils to decide that based on their goals and based on the budget and those other things, but it'll be a mutual agreement, as well as it'll be mutually agreed on how the costs are handled. You know, there's gonna be some things that the Historical Society is gonna want to raise money for and pay for themselves. There may be some elements that they might have an expectation that the town would make some improvements to the site or the building or those type of things, so. All right, and I already showed you exhibit showing the floor plan with the spaces delineated, so that'll be, that should take care of that part, and that's called Exhibit A, so I'll put that in here. And for the most part, the rest of it is pretty much the same as it was before. And, you know, we still have time to look at a couple of elements on here, if there's any other changes that need to be made, but for the most part, it's in the added those things. Any questions about any of those additions?
I appreciate you adding those, those items in red.
Rodney, I don't have any questions about the revisions, but I do have a question, and it's relative to if the Parks and Rec and historical cultural resources have been involved with this particular endeavor at all.
Early on, Parks and Rec was involved in the discussion, and also the Downtown Garner Association, but going back to Parks and Rec, there was discussion, and their desire was for another agency to develop and run the museum. I think at the time, they didn't have a desire to run a museum, and plus knowing that there's other, another entity out there that could do that.
So it's separate from the Parks and Rec?
Yeah, it's, this is separate. Well, it's gonna be a park, so it'll be part of our park system, but the Parks and Rec Department is not gonna be the controlling entity to run the operations of this facility. They certainly may partner on some events, you know, it doesn't preclude them from partnering on some events and some other things, but this is gonna be under the auspices of the Garner Area Historical Society to run and operate and to attract visitors and do the marketing and all those type of things that go along with it. And so what we're planning to do, let me go back to, let me go back to the graphic. So once we, we get more information, we'll have another, another graphic that shows some of the other elements that could also be added, some, some type of on-street parking. I know it's not gonna be parking where you back out into the street, it could straight back into the street. It could potentially be diagonal or parallel parking, and show sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Rodney, you said, once we get other drawings, is there any possibility in that we won't have those other drawings by next Monday?
I think the plan is to have those drawings on Monday. I think the deadline was given to our, the consultant that's handling that, so I think we're, we should be fine. If for some reason we don't, I mean, we may have to just alter these just for visual, but we'll hopefully have those back.
I don't want to get us off into the weeds, and so if I'm headed that way, you turn me around, but I was just gonna ask about the fees, the admission fees. Obviously, for Parks and Rec, people who are citizens in the town of Garner, they sometimes are able to pay a, just a fee, and then they have access to certain recreation and so forth. I'm assuming that would not be the case here, that admission fees would not distinguish between people who are Garner residents and people who are visiting from out of town or wherever, is that right?
Yeah, I haven't had an in-depth discussion about their business model, but I'm not sure it includes fees to get in. There might be a donation request, or?
We have a lovely donation box when you go to the door, but we will not be showing it.
I have admission fee, huh?
Oh, then the other element, as you can see, is grayed out now, future shelter, more track, and then some of these walkways, that will be part of their, some of their fundraising and some of their other site amenities, because I think the plan, and they can elaborate more if they would like, would be to sell bricks or some type of amenity to create a patio or walkway with names and, I guess, friends of the Garner Area Historical Society, or whatever they want to call it. So, anyway, that's pretty much the end of my formal presentation.
I have one more question. When we address this issue again on August 5th, if we give our approval vote to move ahead with it, then when can we expect the depot to actually be moved?
Okay, right now, what we're doing, in the meantime, while we're waiting for the rezoning process to carry forward, Parks and, not Parks and Rec, Public Works is getting bids for the move. They're updating the bids, and what we're trying to do is get on schedule for a moving contractor. So like I said, hopefully by the end of the year, I can't give you an absolute date right now, or not even a month, until we take bids, sign on a contractor, and get on their schedule. And that's why we're trying to do it now and not wait until the rezonings pass. We want to go ahead and engage those contractors now.
How long will the rezoning process be?
That should be done in September by the, is that the first meeting? The first meeting in September? Because it's gonna be a conditional use rezoning, which will go quicker than a, just a typical rezoning, and it will allow it to go to the Planning Commission and then come back to the council on the first meeting in September. It'll go to Planning Commission in August and then come back to council first meeting in September.
Following the rezoning and, let's assume that it gets passed, then, then and only then can we, is it, are we to believe that that's the only time, that after that zoning is approved, that's the only time, then, we have to wait until then before we can adopt the budget and the agreement?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to the attorney, but because it may be a conditional use rezoning, that might be the most prudent way to handle that.
Well, you certainly don't want to approve a contract. I mean, you can adopt a budget to move the building, and it's, the building won't get moved till it's zoned properly, and so, you know.
Then can you adopt the budget and approve the site plan so that, so that, and hold the agreement in abeyance, or is that, what's? I don't know what's the best thing to do, but I don't, I would like for everybody to leave here tonight with knowing when, you know, what the plan is.
Yeah, let me have Mr. Trezenberg weigh in on that. With the rezoning, is that gonna be accompanied by a conditional use site plan, or are they gonna be two independent items that don't need to be tied together?
The site plan and the rezoning would be tied together. I think if I'm understanding the town attorney correctly, we can do the budget potentially at the August 5th meeting with the estimates that we can present to you. You're giving feedback right now just to help the plan move through the technical review committee process, but then we'll actually come back with the site plan and the zoning at that first meeting in September. But if I'm understanding correctly, I think we can do the budget part at your next meeting.
Put the contract on after, after everything's approved.
Let me, let me make this suggestion. We've got two or three things, two or three balls in there trying to get estimates. Nothing's necessarily gonna happen until the rezoning takes place and site plan's approved. I'd just as soon do the budget then, because if we come up with, come up with some different information, it's liable to change that budget, and we're only six days away from having that information. We may, that might put us in a bind. What do y'all think? I'm not trying, I want it, but done once.
Right, I understand.
But there's one thing about it, now you, we can change the budget any time.
Correct, correct.
Change it 24 times a year.
Yeah, and that would be the-
If council wants to go ahead with it, that's fine with me.
That would be the cleanest way, but I think there's some more urgency on their part to get some type of commitment that's formal, some type of formal commitment, whether that's in the form of passing the budget or a resolution saying, well, I don't think you can do a resolution until you go through the preliminary. No, I mean, a more committal, resolution with more of a committal, until you go through the rezoning and conditional site plan approval.
The quasi-traditional process, you cannot commit to anything.
Right, and that's what-
Until you approve it.
Right, and that's what I was, yeah, just saying.
Always. I don't know why anybody's worried about committing anything. My God, we've gone this far, we're not gonna turn back. I mean, let's just be honest about it. But you have to go through the process.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's concern about that. I think they just, from my discussions with them, is need something more formal before they can start their fundraising process, and that's, that's what their urgency is. It's not, it's not a concern about it not being done.
What, what the update on the budget looks like next Monday, then?
All right, any other questions or anything else? Anything missing, any comments? And we do have representatives here, I don't-
Rodney, I was gonna call, allow some time for them, if they want to speak.
Okay. I'll stay here in case any other questions come up.
Please state your name and address.
Amy Griggs, 209 Shady Hollow Lane, Garner. I think that sense of urgency that we feel is sort of a long time in coming. We, we got so excited last October when y'all approved our requests, and so October now seems like five years ago to us and all the work that we put in. We are grateful for anything and everything that y'all agreed to do, and if your timeframe suggests that we must wait for an September meeting to wrap it all up together, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll put bugs in the ears of people that we want to go to for money and trust that they'll trust y'all, you know, if we're talking, speaking with them before your September meeting. It would be lovely to have at the, the August meeting, a budget approval, and that would, we'd be setting off fireworks, I think, if, if you did that. So we are completely, you know, at your mercy and grateful for, for whatever way y'all decide.
Would, would it, would it be, well, this comment, I guess, would, would it be inappropriate for this council to, in essence, adopt a resolution which states or indicates that, based on all the information provided to the council up until this time, that this council resigns to have this project approved and completed when all the final details regarding site plan and, and rezoning and all those things are, are, are worked out?
Yeah, I'm...
The problem, the problem here is the decision to run this through as a conditional use zoning instead of a general district zoning, okay? And that's what complicates everything, because you remember, every time we have a hearing on a site plan, we ask, "Does any council have a preconceived opinion or has made up their mind about this?" And so if you, if you vote for a contract, I mean, you could, you could presumably vote for a generalized budget, but if you, if voting for the budget at the meeting next week means going into the details of the site plan, then you've violated the conditional use site plan rule. I mean, if you just say, "Okay, we're gonna vote X dollars for a budget for this project" and then work out the details later, you know, that's one thing, but the nature of a budget conversation means looking at the site plan probably and going into all the details. So I mean, I, you know...
I'm wondering, um...
It's, it's kind of a problem.
How it makes it different that it's our, it's the town's project, and we're bringing it forth, and we wouldn't be bringing it forth unless we...
Nobody's probably gonna complain about it anyway, okay? But I'm just telling you that it's, it's, it's a stretch, you know? It's just, puts you in a difficult position.
And then so, so it doesn't challenge it. He goes to court, what are they gonna do? revoke the permit?
I mean, this is, it's just kind of an embarrassing stretch to be in, you know?
Exactly. And we, again, we get asked these questions every hearing, "Has anybody, have any, it's a quad, does, do you have any ex parte communications?" Well, we've had ex parte communications, we're having them right now, to be honest, but at least it's public, everybody knows about it, so, yeah, I understand.
And it's a town project, so...
As a town project, that's true.
It's probably expectation for you to have some...
That's true, but the fact of the matter is, is that, that's, that's the game we're gonna play.
Yep.
And there's no way to do a general use zoning, is there, Jeff?
General use takes longer, is my understanding, so...
I thought it was quicker.
You can, you can go that route. My, my sense was that the urgency was kind of to get this going, but if you did go the general, it would have to go for a public hearing on August 20th. It wouldn't go to Planning Commission till their meeting in September and then would not come back to you for a flat until October.
Exactly. Why couldn't it go to a here on August 5th? You don't have time to advertise.
Because we have to advertise.
That's, that's the answer there, yeah. Okay, well, well, thanks for your answer. I mean, I'm all in favor of making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and get this done correctly, even if we have to wait a little longer.
All right, we'll address it further on Monday night.
Judy has something she'd like to say.
In the discussion about the budget, Amy is absolutely right, and we're all in harmony on, "We're grateful for anything you do for us." But when, when you go to apply for a grant, or you're going out to, with some information to someone and you're trying to raise funds, and do you have a commitment from the board? No, we don't. So that, that's always been our contention all along. We already have a resolution that does set forth your commitment, and we do feel that you guys are interested in this. It's just the, what we are waiting for before we can take any formal steps is the adoption of the budget. I get that there may be something in the site plan that, you know, might come up that would, would change it. As far as the extra time on a general use rezoning, we've been waiting since October the 16th. Two more weeks to us is really not gonna make that much difference.
You waited this long?
And Rodney, Rodney had said they're already looking at getting estimates on the move, so all that's in the works, so I can't imagine how doing a general use rezoning or any delay there would, would cause us any, any problems.
At least another month, though, here in October. We can prove this at the first meeting in September, and there's at least another month if you wait till general use, that's what he was saying. We weren't getting to the first meeting in October, that's another month. This is the quickest, easiest, better role.
I, I guess I'm trying to distinguish the budget between the site plan process.
Well, as Mr. Anderson noted, you know, if we talk about specifically about the budget, specific things in the site plan, then basically we're approving the budget for a specific site plan that we hadn't approved yet.
Okay, now, I am familiar with that. However, does that mean that our next step is going to be, once the site plan is approved, then you're gonna look at the budget and approve it? Which moves...
Well, it could be on the same meeting as you do on back to back.
Or at the same time.
On the same time.
So all that's being delayed now another month? Like I said, yeah.
Is, is your point, Judy, that if we turn it up, change it to a general rezoning, then adoption of the budget is not a contentious item, meaning that the budget could be adopted next week, throw the ultimate approval back another month, but you just get the budget a month early? Is that, okay? Does everybody understand what she's saying? Is changing the rezoning classification based on the fact that we can adopt a budget a month earlier?
Still, does the site plan have to be approved?
Well, well, the site plan would be approved by staff later, probably. I mean, the, I mean, the point, I think the point right there is right, that if you're not gonna get the contractor to move the stuff until, in the fall or winter, what duration it might, whether it's rezoned in August or September or October, if you've already got the budget in place and they're out soliciting funds, that's, sort of...
You just say that's a general use rezoning, then they gotta approve a site plan, so the site plan might not, might not get approved till November, is not what you're saying.
Well, they, they approve that in, in office.
Okay, but still, it's gotta be rezoned first, so it could still be mid to late October. What I'm saying, the, the site plan may not get approved till October or November.
Well, that's when he was talking about getting the contractor in anyway, so, you know, I don't...
You're pushing it all back, and all we heard was fast, fast, fast. I don't see how, the, the budget being 30 days difference shouldn't make a hell of a difference. I'll get the site plan and everything approved first. That to me should be the priority, because then what if, what if the movers gotta open and say, "Hey, we can come in October." "Oh, we hadn't approved the site plan yet." "Well, I can't come again till December." I would get the, I would get the meat that you gotta have, the most meat on the plate and get it on the plate and get it done, and approve all three things the first meeting in September and move on. 30 days on the budget shouldn't make a hell of a difference. Like you said, you waited since last October.
We have waited since last October.
Just think, we've been waiting almost five years to the rec center. Oh, I'm sorry, let that slip out. Now, now the bet will be which opens first, the depot or the rec center. Got to see which one of those is gonna open first, the depot or the rec center.
So as it stands now, then what you're recommending is that in Sep, okay, it'll go to the Planning Commission...
In August.
In August, and then back to you guys in September. So what you're proposing is that you consider the budget and the site plan at the September meeting.
If you go through the process, you do the rezoning first, you do the site plan, and then a next, a separate item, because it won't be under that, will be the budget, yes.
So there's no need for the August meeting?
They even have a contract with a, with a mover at that point to vote on. Be done back to back.
And the agreement.
All of it, and be done at one time.
And the agreement, right.
And you're not waiting on anything yet, you're not waiting for something down the road, and this happened and that happened, it's all done at one meeting, it's clean. To me, that seems like the most logical sense, it's nice and clean and done. Waiting 30 more days to, to, on the budget to talk to someone. I mean, the process is gonna, apparently, based off our conversation, the process is gonna start, so... And if, you know, if they talk to the mover and you got the opportunity to do it earlier, then once you got everything approved the first is September, you can move it. You know, if they got an opening, they can do it. I hate for, I hate for the site plan, the rezoning that happened in October, then the site plan get delayed to the end of October, and you missed the opportunity to move the building already. Not saying it's gonna happen.
The purpose of the August, bringing this back, August the 5th, was to present some of these things I showed tonight at the public meeting. I just don't have the, the official drawings, but this drawing is good enough to give a visual, but I, I don't have the, I don't have, I don't have the one that shows the expanded elements that could be added. So it's up to council whether you wanna see this again on Monday night or not.
Let me throw something in, just for my sake of clarity on my part. Suppose we waited and go through this process and do it all at one time, but in the meantime, we have a mover who says, "I can do it in two weeks." Can we then let him do that, or because we haven't finished anything? Or do we have to wait and finish and then hope he has room later on on his schedule?
The site's not prepared yet to do that. The site's not prepared, you need more time than that, 'cause the site's gotta be prepared first.
I understand that, Greg, but I'm saying theoretically...
But you mean any contractor, the footing contractor, foundation, any, can, can any work commence, is what you're...
Right, when we have not...
It's not dependent on zoning, you can do some work.
Yeah.
If, if they would, if they would agree to wait and get paid until after we approved the budget...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have a, I don't have a, I don't have a budget in order to sign the, the pre-audit in order to sign any contracts right now. So I'm just, I'm just getting folks lined up, so when September, meeting, first meeting in September comes, we'll be ready to sign contracts pretty soon thereafter.
Boy, this is a case of which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
It's pretty simple, you got two, you do two meetings. Planning Commission, August, us in September. Or you do four meetings. Budget next week, Planning Commission in September, us in October, a site plan by staff later in October. That's four events.
Okay. On a lighter note, I wanted to address something that you had asked Councilmember Vance. As far as Parks and Recreation running the museum, I think that had been discussed some years back and then never really went anywhere, but what we have found when, in some of our research and looking at museums, that there are a majority of museums that are operated by nonprofit organizations. My personal feeling with that is that we have more commitment, more knowledge, more passion, and, you know, this, this is our major goal, is to operate a museum. Anyway, we're, we're excited to have the opportunity to do it.
And my point that I was raising is that, understanding that Parks and Recs has a historical cultural resources piece within them, within their department, that if any coordination that going on between you two, don't have an issue with what you're doing, what you're proposing, just wanna know the historical background as to the coordination that is going on, so we're fine.
Yeah, and, and our, you know, our goal is to definitely coordinate and communicate with both Parks and Recreation and, as Rodney mentioned, DGA as well. I mean, when you, when you have these type of uses, you certainly have to, you know, keep up a good communication level. That's what explains our, our passion about doing this.
Rodney, summarize where we're going from, from here.
I think, from my summary, there's no need to bring anything back on August the 5th, which is Monday. You've pretty much seen all of the main elements tonight. We'll get cleaned up, site plans or new site plans, official site plans, those will be used during the Planning Commission meeting, and then we'll, following the Planning Commission meeting, we'll bring all the, the site plan, we'll bring this contract, which serves as the MOU, I'll bring cost estimates back and any other elements all back at the first meeting in September, and they'll be ordered accordingly to keep within the regulations that night.
Since we've got three potential larger items, you send us updated budget when you get it, as opposed to four or five days before, four days before that meeting we take action, because that's, we've seen that surprises, you know, we don't know what we run into, so give Chris the amount of time that's needed, but maybe it, it just, send it to us, if we wanna put it, if we see something that needs to be brought to the agenda, we will, but send us an updated number by mid-month.
I'll get it to you as soon as I can.
Just, just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I'd, I'd like to thank these members here and the others for their perseverance. We're all understanding, I guess, that the process must go forth and it takes some things to do that, but expedite this as much as we can within the rules that we are bound to, so, keep charging.
And just, just one other thing for further clarification. We do expect to have a funding partner. I just have not included that in any of the budget until we have a firm commitment, so, in case anybody was wondering about that. We have been in contact with the railroad to see what their participation may be, so, all right?
That was my next question, I just held on it. Thank you, Rodney.
Okay, we've got some direction, everything clear? All right, we go back to the first, number one on the agenda, standard contract service templates. Chris Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Johnson, Engineering Department. Our first item is regarding, as you may know, Town Council had previously expressed a desire to go through and standardize our professional services contracts. In past practice, it's been sort of the town's standard to send out a request for qualifications to engineering consultants for, say, a street and sidewalk project, and then once we would award the project and select the consultant we desired to work with, then we would get together and meet with the consultant, come up with a scope, and allow the consultant to put together a draft contract. What that tends to do is that, depending on the consultant you're with, every time it's like starting over again, you're, you're sort of using a template that each engineering firm has produced. Sometimes you may run into situations where their legal teams on their side may have different viewpoints as the town attorney's side on our side. And so what we've, want, would like to do is to put together a standard contract that the town uses across the board, and when we submit out a RFQ, we can attach a copy of that, those terms and conditions, and it just sort of starts, so every contract will start from a template that the town's already reviewed and approved. And you still have, the consultants have a, have a time to review that, and if they wish to provide comment during the RFQ process, we can make those notes, and sometimes you just have small minor changes that they would request, and sometimes that's not a big deal. We just would like to be able to start to be more consistent, make it more efficient, and not require every single contract to, to be different and require more time and review by staff, by town attorney, by manager's office, by council members. So that was sort of, this is sort of the, the first step to do that. What we've already, I know it's a lot of information you have in your backup, we've got five different attachments in there. The first two were the professional services contract template, and then we've also got a contract amendment template, which basically just means it's for supplemental agreement that does come up. It's usually just a one-page document that sort of refers back to all the conditions in the original agreement, and then you just add in what your new scope is that you're adding to the project and any fee associated with it. Then we went, also went ahead, since we already do have recently had... Then we went, also went ahead, since we already do have, recently had three consultants last year awarded on-call contracts, and we still have yet to execute those, those contracts, because we haven't had a lot of projects going out the door. The first one was Lake Drive widening. We actually went ahead and took the liberty, we had most of these completed before, about a month ago, so we went ahead and did a test drive with that one, and Arcadis had, was the consultant that was working on that project. They had put together one of their contracts. We went ahead and floated this contract out. They had very few comments, so we've actually tested this once already, and it went very smoothly. And then the statement of work template is something that just basically accompanies an on-call master agreement, and so that's where you'll define a project, such as Lake Drive, was one statement of work that piggybacked the on-call master agreement. And then the last attachment was a scope of services template. This one was not used, has not been used yet, but most of these agreements I used in my prior position with the City of Raleigh, these are all documents that have been used over time for many years, I would say over a decade. They've gone through small iterations of updates over time as legal changes are made, both at local and state, federal levels. So they get tweaked every now and then. I would presume that that would continue over time, even after we make a decision to move forward with what we've got. So I don't have a formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on any of the attachments we provided, but what we were looking for was council's authorization to go ahead and utilize these new templates moving ahead on all street sidewalk style projects.
If you have any questions?
I'm not sure if this is the right question, but I was gonna ask you, Chris. Is something like this, as it's adopted, is it, or has it been vetted in any ways you would think appropriate amongst your peer professionals or some public group that says...
Yeah, well, as I said, this, this was something that had been used by the City of Raleigh for some time. I'm sure it was vetted at many levels in that organization. When we got it in here, we went through and reviewed it, and we've had it reviewed by both engineering, the town attorney, and our purchasing department, and all of those departments internally are very comfortable with the templates as you've been provided.
I read through it, and I like it. Just, I've got two or three things that I'd just left to have a, not go through with it here tonight, but I'd love to meet with Chris, just, and ask a couple of questions for, some of it for curiosity, some of it for pure professional basis, but other than that, I, this is the kind of thing, too, that we can adopt pretty quickly, and as we see changes are needed, real easy to tweak this and move right along. This is, to me, this is, this is something we've been asking for. I'll put it in perspective. The very first agenda package I looked at in December of '03, had a problem with an engineering contract, and I sent a note back to Frank. I said, "It's not big enough to, to jump out here the very first night and show my backside, but the very first night, sixteen years ago, had a problem, and we have been battling this ever since. I appreciate you getting this out here. This has long been needed. It sets forth some, some things that, about limitations of liability, insurance coverage, those things that are just basic, and we have to go through every different one and grind through it, and they are, they're troublesome, are they not, Elmo?"
They are. They are.
But my congratulations to staff for getting this done. Thank you very much. I just left to show you a couple of things, or just a couple of typos, and not any big items, I don't think.
Yeah, and like, like, just as he said, getting these things tweaked over time is expected and should not be a big deal, and I'm sure that minor touch-ups here and there are gonna be pretty commonplace. And like I said, some consultants that review them, each consultant's legal team's different, and each one has different opinions, and some may have some issues with some clauses in the indemnity language, some may have a slight change in opinion about certain things within scope and what have you. So we'll, we'll be looking at that case by case. But I think most consultants that we deal with, that work in this type of construction and design, are used to this, so I don't think there's anything in here that's gonna set off any kind of red flags to anybody.
I think one of the things that we, that will go under the radar, there are some items in here particularly about underground utilities, that we're going to require some searching and some evaluation, some location work being done. That'll add some cost on the front end, but it will save not only cost, but time on the, on the back end. That is, we just could never pull the trigger and get that, make that a part of a standard scope of services. So there's things in here that are really, I think will really be positive for the town's benefit down the road.
Very good. Everybody comfortable?
We need to put it on the formal agenda then, for adoption and...
Yeah, the plan is to bring it back at a later meeting. I'm not sure if it'll be ready for Monday night's meeting.
We can have that if, if that's, we can do that.
Okay.
Move on, Consulor, agenda?
Yes.
We've had discussions. Consulor, sounds good to me.
Very good.
Move on.
Hey, Chris, you've also got the White Oak, Hebron Church, Ackerman Roundabout.
Yes, sir. So our second item, as you know, we've, we've got the White Oak-Ackerman Road and Hebron Church intersection improvements project. Town council had previously approved this, I guess about a year or so ago. Go through a quick agenda for you, give you a little bit, project background, and talk about some of the work that we've completed to date, then talk about the LAP agreement that we've gotten from NCDOT and the terms of that agreement, and then talk about our recommendation and next steps for the project. So just a very brief background, it's, this intersection is, we've got three streets that are tying together in not, not exactly the best fashion. There's getting more and more, there's an area of town that is growing very quickly. We've got increased congestion at the intersections. There's residential development going in along Ackerman Road, and just off the page here in the bottom, off of Hebron, just outside, is Garner High School, South Garner High School. So it's just an area where intersection improvement of this nature's dire need. The milestones that's sort of been completed in past, I guess, year and a half now, the request for qualifications for design was back in December of 2017. Arcadis was the selected consultant for that. Council was provided an update in early '18, and at that time, several different alternatives were analyzed by the consultant during the preliminary design phase. They had seven alternates. They had a stakeholder meeting, which had quite a bit of turnout, and they narrowed down from seven alternates down to two, one being a roundabout design versus a second alternative of an intersection realignment. That was in April of '18. Then they had a public meeting, which had approximately forty-eight participants. Several of them submitted surveys. It was held in May, and then came back to council, and alternate, alternative number three, which was the partial dual-lane roundabout, was the final alternate selected in June of last year. So since then, environmental documentation has been moved forward with the consultant, and staff submitted its initial request for getting LAP funding through Campo back in October of last year. The consultant moved ahead. The design is funded by the Town of Garner, so the, the design has moved forward. They had 25% plans about the time the LAP submission went in. The LAP project was adopted in February of this year, and so then, just over the last month or so, DOT has submitted back to the town, asked us to submit our, I guess, formal requests through their system, which we did last month, and then we just received their draft agreement in July for execution, and that's for the funding for right-of-way in construction. So that brings us to tonight. Again, just for those that maybe haven't seen it in a while, this was a simulation that was put together of what the dual-lane roundabout, partial dual-lane roundabout would look like. It's working. Well, it didn't show the cars moving, but there, that's what it would look like.
We've seen that one before, and it really looked good. No wreck since then, apparently.
So talking more about the agreement terms from DOT, this is for right-of-way acquisition and construction. A total amount is 2.155 million. It is a 75% cost share with federal funding, with a 25% local match. The terms of the cost share, I, sometimes it's 80/20, sometimes it's 75/25. You increase your scoring by increasing the local match. That was a decision that was made at the time that this went in, so the town went in with a 25% cost share. So if you take the 538,000 figure, you combine that with the design funding of 330, the total combined cost for the Town of Garner right now for the project would be around 869,000. You have a question?
Yes, I'm, I'm thinking that this was, this was a project where it was only one piece of property that needed to be acquired?
There's, I looked at it briefly. There's about ten parcels that touch the project, but a lot of those may not require right-of-way or very much easement. I think the, as you can see, the right-of-way figure, 75,000, is not very high, so the bulk of the roundabout is actually centered right in the right spot where it would not require a lot of acquisition. It's really gonna be the legs, three legs approaching that might touch and require some small strip takings from the adjacent property owners.
One of the things I was, when I read through the agreement, it talked about, it could read it and make you think, it made you think that maybe design costs were eligible. There was some wording that, that made it sound like that.
I think that's because most of the agreement templates are the same regardless of whether you're going for design for right-of-way or for construction funding, so they don't change the, the way it's written to kind of for DOT's simplification and template standardization process.
But it is, that 330 is not an eligible cost.
Correct.
And we intended it that way to streamline the process, move us along quicker.
Yes, sir.
And...
And I mean, I don't know for sure, but I know that design-eligible funding has been a little, we've, we've seen decreases in design contracts getting funding as compared to right-of-way in construction. It's always been more, a lot more money for, from laps goes towards right-of-way construction, because that's the higher dollar, but sometimes you can get design funding, but depending on the year, the majority of the time, the municipalities end up funding the design to streamline it.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind going back to the simulation? There you go. Okay. Because I wasn't a part of the initial discussion, can you just point out the streets which are which?
Actually, the angle I wasn't, I knew that question was gonna come up, and that's why I wanted Jeff to be here, because I hadn't had a chance to touch on that. Which street was which?
Sure. So this is, this is White Oak coming from the bottom of your screen, northbound towards the shopping center.
Okay.
And then this is Ackerman going off the, the top of your screen, and then Hebron Church going to the left of your screen down towards the high school.
Apparently, that intersection is single-lane controlled, so the roundabout is gonna remove that single, and it'd be a free flow.
And so, yeah, that, that slips, that outside lane coming north on New Hope, it, they just have to wiggle a little bit.
White Oak.
White Oak, I'm sorry. Yes, on White Oak, they have to wiggle a little bit, but that's, another feature they had in there, that was about a 70-foot radius, I think it's a 70-foot radius on the circle to allow large trucks, tractor-trailer rigs. Anybody coming up on White Oak that wants to go west on Ackerman, they just get in on the inside lane, and you, you understand better than most of us what's going on, but this was, this thing, this, when Hitt came in, this was the first job that he got on, and getting this moved this quick is probably strongly dependent upon him. Is, is that an accurate statement, John?
Yes, sir. Very much so.
And I ran him off.
Mr. Johnson?
You can proceed.
So tonight, we were looking for recommendation to authorize town manager to execute the LAP agreement with NCDOT and move forward with the right-of-way acquisition once funding is secured. So the next steps for us would be to, we've got the second public meeting currently shown in September. We could, another alternative could be to go ahead and submit our 65% plans to DOT first, because I think we're pretty close to that milestone already, and then get their feedback, and then have the public meeting immediately thereafter. The main, main point is to have the public meeting, to get this thing out. It's been a while since the public's seen it, and make sure they have a chance to look at the design before we move into the right-of-way acquisition, which is scheduled to go, starting at the early of 2020. As I said, we've got approximately ten parcels. I don't know the extent of impacts on those ten parcels. And then we will move towards right-of-way certification with NCDOT, which is a requirement through the LAP process. We're sort of preparing a package similar to that for Timber Drive as we speak. And then final plan specification and estimate package would, and then, just a reminder, this, this schedule's a little longer than what you had in your backup. This was a updated schedule based on feedback we got from DOT this week. So they actually added a little bit more time in there for some of the time as we submit plans to them, to better fit their process. But right now, we're showing this as an advertisement in March of 2021. Our hope is that we, this is, is a schedule that we can meet or beat. We would actually prefer to let this project earlier than that, mostly because the, near the middle end of construction, we would prefer to have the Hebron Church leg done during the summer while school is out. So advertising it, the project in March, probably would not provide a notice to proceed until the middle of the summer, and that's not the best timing. So we're gonna try to move it ahead by trying to move through these prior approvals a little bit faster than this, so that we might be able to advertise it in late 2020. That's our hope.
Looking at that, I mean, that's, we were hoping it might be open in the spring of '21 at one time when we first talked about this, and I were further and further behind. This does not make me, does not give me optimism about when the Jones-Sawyers Road Project might open. We talked about three years from our talk, talked about it opening in '22, and now this makes me think it's not gonna happen. That won't happen in three years, but we'll see.
Is this project roundabout sort of what I'd call a stand aside from the, from roadway intersections there now, or will there, there'll be a detour during the course of this project? How will traffic flow in the meantime?
Given that the bulk of the roundabout is sitting inside sort of a center, an area that's not actually got travel lanes, my hope, and we'll have to talk more with the design consultant as they move into final plan phase, is that they might be able to build a good portion of this street, like in this section, without much problems or detours. The, the problem is gonna be getting these types of areas done where you really got the two-lane traffic coming off of these streets. That's the hardest part. So the goal is to try to get as much built as you can. You've got some area here that you can build as well that's kind of sitting between two roadways. So it's, it's, these, every roundabout's different depending on how the intersecting streets align today, so that's something that we'll have to iron out during final design as they get deeper into the traffic control plans, which is probably the next step they're moving towards after the 65% stage, but we will do whatever we can to try to minimize impacts to traffic, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna close down traffic altogether for long periods of time.
Thank you.
I'd suggest getting this on the, for, or any, just put it on the agenda for, for Monday.
Do that. That was the end of my presentation, unless you have any other questions that can help. That was the end of my presentation unless you have any other questions that can help.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Number four is the town attorney services.
Mr. Mayor, the, this is a follow-up on conversations that were begun into last year around January when we realized that we were greatly exceeding the, the budgeted hours for, for legal services. You recall we met with Law and Finance Committee and we showed what the prior six months had, had, had turned out to be. Law and Finance Committee and I discussed not jumping the whole way to, to what it looked like it would take, go on an incremental step and we did that in, in January. We followed up from January through June and found out that the, the hourly commitment has been essentially the same as it was in the last six months of, of, of last year. So basically, what I've come up with here is a proposal that would reflect modifying the, the proposed monthly retainer to meet the roughly 93 hours a month. But I've got another little thing in here that makes it, I think, a win-win for everybody. We've got 160 hours accumulated in the last six months that I propose just sort of setting outside in the bank and if it turns out that the hours don't pan out through the next six months like, like they happened the last year, we'll just do hour for hour credit against what's in the bank and settle up, you know, six months from now.
You're floating $24,000 for us.
Excuse me?
You're floating...
About 23,500, somewhere in that range. I forget the exact figure, but something in there, right. And I figure we can, the, the question that we had in, in January was whether that was really going to keep up that much and, and you know, it's hard to predict and I said, I can't guarantee it and so we, we didn't, we didn't try to set it for the highest level. So I think maybe this will work out for everybody.
The 14,000 per, per month is, and this is just six months or whatever time it may be now, but anyway, that, that'll work out, $168,000 a year, give or take unless there was additional monies needed. So I can assure you, looking at some other towns, I have a piece of paper here, I looked at, that is dramatically less expensive than legal services in some of our sister communities.
So I've got two or three on, on staff.
Yes. Apex has a town attorney, two assistants and a paralegal, 22 and a half hours and their budget's $435,000.
A lot of legal, ain't it?
Wake Forest, last year was 287, this year's budget at 250. Holly Springs, last year was 291, this year the approved budget was 289. We're still getting a hometown discount or whatever Ms. Anderson wants to call it, I don't know, but anyway, it's, it's a very reasonable fees, that's all I can say.
Yeah, I was just going to note that what the attorney is presenting here is, is a close follow-on to discussions that we had with him, with the law and finance and prediction of how the hours might vary has stayed on the high end, so I think the proposal that is being made here is reasonable and I would favor it.
Put on the agenda Jennifer next week.
Yeah, thank you. We have two other, two other items, Mr. Mayor, that we need to deal with. One, do they have that on their desk?
Nope.
The resolution, okay. Is that in the agenda itself or?
No, no, because it came after.
Can you pass that out to them? We, on the Timber Drive easement acquisitions, we're happy to announce that out of the 21 easements that we, we needed to secure, we've got 20 of them in hard copy form, 17 of them are recorded, I'm recording the other three tomorrow morning and we've got one which we have a PDF of that a gentleman in Texas sent us and he swears he put it in the mail address to us last Friday. We keep going to the mailbox to see if it's going to come in. Hopefully it'll come in tomorrow in which event we will have all, all 21 of the easements in within our July 31 deadline Chris set for us and, and no condemnation lawsuits. Basically, what, what we need to do on this resolution here, just for the benefit of the finance department, if there are any changes in, in figures during the course of a project, finance likes it if I go and bring a resolution before the town, have it adopted by the town so that they have documentation against which to write a check. So this just reflects changing the temporary construction easement for the, the lady out there that has the row of badly distressed Leland Cypress trees that we need to remove to put the sidewalk in. So we, we changed her temporary construction easement from, from a fairly small amount to a 10-foot swath across her property so our contractor can take care of all of that when he gets in there. And if any questions about it, I, I can answer them, but this is otherwise just a formality. And I think we ask if you all be willing to, to actually consider and vote on this so we can get this in, inside of Chris's December 31 schedule for the project.
Mayor, move, we approve Resolution 2019-2379B as presented by Attorney Anderson.
Second.
First, the second, a lot of discussion, all in favor, vote my son aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Another item we'd like you to take action on, and I know that's not customary at work sessions, but I, I learned about 3 o'clock this afternoon that there'd been a slip to its cup and lip in connection with one of our, our rezoning ordinances and, and ordinance was recorded at the Register D's inadvertently, which showed the zoning being approved for the mobile home that you all actually denied at your last meeting. And so I have proposed, drafted a, a, a short document which simply says ordinance, repealing ordinance number 2019-3984, whereas ordinance number 2019-3984 was not adopted by vote of the town council, was in fact contrary to the vote of the council at the regularly convened town meeting on July 16, 2019 and was signed and recorded through a scribbler's error, the same should be repealed and declared null and void. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Garner that ordinance number 2019-3984, recorded on July 29, 2019, in book 017521, page 0723B, and the same is hereby repealed and declared null and void, duly adopted this 30th of July, Mayor and Deputy Clerk. So basically, if, if you all have any questions about that, I can, you know, I can try to amplify further. This is a fairly simple matter just to get this on record and if, if Ms. Rebecca can get it all formalized tonight, I tell her I'm going to record some easements first thing in the morning, I'll record it first thing in the morning.
Move to approve ordinance 2019-3986.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, vote my son aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Finally, did you have anything?
Uh, I do not have any reports. Let me just make sure. No, I'm good. Thanks.
Yeah, let's start with Buck.
Nighting tonight, I'll save mine till next week.
Right.
Mr. Kennedy, does he have anything? I'm unprepared. I'm not sure, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Just a couple items. I know from time to time, we have concerns about the fast growth of grass in portions of our town that probably the town staff is not always responsible for. I'm thinking about the Aveversboro Road area, just down from the Aldi's place, the, the care facility that was there that was torn down, that, that's really a grown up sort of place there. Is that strictly up to the property owner there?
I turned it in two weeks ago and we're still, I'm waiting if, if they're, if they're moving with, if they're crawling up here with, paying attention, but I turned it in two weeks ago.
And I believe it was mowed when I came into work this morning, so if, if I...
Not, not the place I'm thinking about, John.
The old, the old rest, old rest home?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's not one cut.
Okay.
I'll, I'll leave it when I go back home.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't lose, I don't lose...
I was thought, thinking you were talking about the old rest homes, so what, what is, what's the area you're talking about then if it's not the old rest home?
That's it.
Questions whether they've been mowed or not. And, and there may not be anybody here that can give me any insights here. I've had several people ask me if the town has any prospects for occupying the building that was, that was the Kroger store. Of course, Joe's not here, so maybe there's no answer to that. Several people asked about that and I said, I'm not sure, but I will ask at a council meeting.
He has not made me aware of anything. I don't, I'm not sure if John knows of anything, but...
I know he's been working with the shopping center landlord and I know that oftentimes things that, that he's working on are, are not available to be discussed until a certain point in the, in, in the transaction.
I want to beat the dead horse by asking the last question, but no, no specific public updates on our rec center becoming functional. Any new information, I guess I should ask?
Well, I would just say, you know, we've got, we got some information today and I think the plan is to have some of the paving done in August and then some of the more, you know, punch list type items done in September to complete the building. The biggest outstanding item is the roadwork on Monique and out on Highway 70, so we're waiting on them to get started on that.
Everyone starts going to...
Pushing them as hard as we can. It's been aggravating, to say the least. The contractor that the town contracted with is working on the field, the field prep that the council recently approved, so if you go out there, you'll see that work being done. They are, continue to put the brick pavers out on Main Street, so some of that's getting done and hopefully soon, some of the signage and those other elements may get put in, but um, yeah, we're just trying to get them to move as fast as we can.
Okay.
The, the owners of the company, the, the company that owns the construction company have brought in a new person to manage the project on a daily basis and so we're hopeful that he can make some of the things happen that we have been waiting for, so.
Project managers over the course of the...
It, it's been a few.
Thank you. It's fine. I'm finished.
Yes.
Each of you have at your table a copy of an email that I received, I asked Rebecca to make these copies this afternoon. There's a residence that, resident that lives down Aveversboro Road, further past where the new construction is going on, the townhomes beside Lowe's and she's just very concerned about the trees and, and cutting all the trees down and she asked that, she sent me a link to a, a video, I guess, about saving trees and asked that I distribute that to council members, so that's what this is about.
Where she lives, they did the same thing.
But I did what she...
I mean, somebody asked me about it in the village and I said, "Look around inside in here, do you see any tall trees?" I said, "This was the same thing, they could just see it from the road and the Lowe's through shopping center was the same thing." I mean, old spindly pine trees.
I, I tried explaining that, I didn't gain much traction.
It'll look much, it'd be much more attractive again, because you get that the village looks attractive it is and how much those trees have grown, they planted in there and this will look the same way as doing most subdivisions.
Did what she asked. I had a complaint this week, I believe the house number's 1201 Lakeside Drive, it, you can barely see the house for all the vegetation grown up around it. I think it's 1201, I'm not sure, I know it's the 1200 block, it's on a corner. So I had someone ask if we can...
It sits at an angle?
Yes. Wondered if anything could be done about, you know, getting that cleaned up. And one more question about DOT's schedule for fixing the dip at the Don Roarbar Bridge, can they not give us some? Five years, 10 years?
They've not given us any timeframe. The, the update that I think was received last week was that they are working to try to, it's a pretty unique situation and I think they're trying to come up with a plan of how they can fix it and it's not a, it's not a standard fix, so I think because of that, they have not committed to any timeline.
They admitted that it would have been very nice if they'd listened to us to begin with when we told them there was a problem because they told us for a very long time there was nothing wrong.
Yes, I'm meeting with somebody at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Wonderful. All right. And that is all.
Tell them a...
I'll hold mine, Mr. Mayor. We're good. Thank you.
They got anything else to offer? Get a motion to adjourn.
Move with adjourn, Mr. Mayor.